Okay, we could still come on. Like you'll know, well, you know, when she's on, so you let us know that he's on, just so we know. Thank you. Hey, good afternoon, welcome. Thank, thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Our first meeting of the new year. Welcome to a new year and a new decade. And those of you joining us remotely, welcome. Okay, we'll proceed with our agenda. We don't have anything marked by staff for discussion until item E16 on page four, so prior to that, are there any items on the agenda that any council members would like to discuss? Prior to that, you do. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I spoke with Chief Crable this morning about item A4, the Certified List for Fire Lieutenants, and just wanted to understand some clarification of how that process works. And it sounds like there's been a change recently, and so I asked if she could come and explain some of that information to us today about the change, what the current process is, and what she's thinking future process.
Great idea, yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Yes, in speaking with Ms. Atkins today, I can tell, I could tell that maybe there's some misunderstanding on how the process works. So I'm actually very happy to be standing up here and talking to you today. What happened was that in the fire department and the police department, civil service positions, to be promoted, you have to take a test per the civil service law, which is state code. It's chapter 400 in the state code, and it's lays out the process. When you're going to promote, you have to put it out so many days before you're getting ready to accept applications. Even though they work for the city, they must apply again if they want to be promoted per the law. So, once they apply, then a test is set up, a testing date, and that is required too by code. And we have a test process that we use for promotions in the fire department for many decades. It's a great process. It really measures a person who's going to be moving into that position. And what we do is, chiefs or officers from different departments throughout the state, three or four of them come here, and they do the, all the evaluation process. Our administrative staff have no part in the testing process, except to set up the testing time, as Rachel will also say that's how it works. But anyway, we have this panel of chiefs. What we do is, we then set up a test. The test has essay questions. It also has where they do assessment centers, meaning that we give an assignment, like there's a fire on the third floor of Henderson House on South 15th. You're the lieutenant, first on scene. How are you going to handle the situation? They're given 20 to 30 minutes to prepare their remarks for those chiefs, and then they appear before the chiefs, and the chiefs actually read them. They're, they've, they're giving three or four of those types of scenarios for the chiefs, and then they're rated. Their essay questions are also rated by those outside chiefs. Then, once all the candidates have gone through all the assessment center, those chiefs tally the scores and then rate them by score. You have a top candidate, second candidate, third candidate by test score. That list, then, is given to the Civil Service Commission to be approved. The Civil Service Commission then approves it. After that, then we come to council. The council must approve the list. And then that list has to be used for me to choose who's going to be promoted. So that's kind of how it works. So, when someone wants to apply for a lieutenant or a battalion chief position, they have to apply. They have to meet criteria. On the fire department, they have to be on the department for five years to be testing for a lieutenant position. We prefer they have an associate degree and that they have so many years' experience. So, then they apply, take the test, and we get our list. What happened this time, it's been past practice for the city of Marion. We've had where we submit a list to the Civil Service Commission, and sometimes the list is posted after they approve it in alphabetical order. According to state law, it must be by test score. Okay? We did not do that, so that is why it's coming back to you to be reapproved, if that makes sense. Also, according to state law, the list can only have 10 on the list to be approved. We had 14 pass the test. So, we made the list for 14 because we have in the past done this, because there are nine lieutenant positions. So I asked the Civil Service to please allow, since they all passed, those 14, if I could have a list of 14 to choose from. They passed that. Per state law, we cannot do that. It can only be a list of 10, even though they all passed. Okay? So that is also why we're bringing this list back, and there's only a list of 10, whereas prior, a year ago, you approved a list of 14. So that's where we're at with that. Do you want me to?
Helpful explanation, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions for the chief?
It's a complicated situation, and it really limits in the promotion process because I have to go by that list. I can't take into account how well they've done, or how well they've been a leader on the department. That comes in later, of course, but I have to go by that list. I may think the 14th person that passed on the list is the best candidate to be a lieutenant, but they had a bad day testing. And unfortunately, they have to wait then the two to three years as the state law requires. So, our hands are kind of tied when it comes to those things. It makes it difficult. So in talking with legal, it's been found that the law is pretty archaic. It's been in the state code for decades, and it's not to today's, how we do things today. So it may need to be changed, and I plan on talking with the State Professional Fire Chiefs Association and seeing if we can't get the law changed, because it is so archaic. But just so you know, that happened, and sorry it happened, but we want to follow the state code, of course.
Thank you. Oh, yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Chief, as this came to my awareness, as I am likely to do, I went and searched around in state code, and I would agree with you, it is kind of archaic. But, and I think really the section we're talking about is the Iowa Code, chapter 400 dot 11. And it makes reference to a listing of 40 names, but then goes on and gives a specification for 10 names. And I guess the legal question that I would like to get cleared up with existing language is, does in 400 dot 11 of the state code, does that in fact limit us to 10 names? It makes a specification for 10, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say a limit of 10. And in the same section, it's referencing a list of 40 names. So, I'm trying to understand, is it 10? Is it 40? Is it sometimes 10? Is it sometimes 40? Where does it really, what's the resting point for this? Because as I look at the decision that was made through the Civil Service Commission nominally a year ago, they approved the list of 14, and then essentially that same list, less four, has just been approved, or is being presented to us as being approved. And so I, it's just the, it seems to me there's some squishiness in the code that's rather unsatisfying.
I would agree, very much so.
It is, it is my understanding, the 40 is for entry level?
Yes.
Testing, so that would be for police officers or firefighters?
That are being hired, not promotion.
The promotionals, which would be lieutenant, sergeant, and above, would be a limit of 10.
That, okay, that's a, and I didn't pick up on that distinction in my reading of that. I guess then really the essence of my question is, is are we absolutely hard deck limited to 10?
Yes, we have consulted with Lynch Dallas Legal, and yes, we are.
So, I think a change is warranted.
But yes, the 40, as she said, is for new hires. So when I test, we're testing this Saturday, as a matter of fact, for firefighters, we can only have a list of 40. Is that correct?
The only other observation that I would make, and this is just maybe tied to management of our, our code and our policies, is I looked at our own civil service code. It's not discernible to me when the last time that was reviewed. There is no publication date, no review, last reviewed date in all of that, and that's consistent with comments relative to our policies that I made before. So hopefully, we can add that into just giving a designation of when it was last reviewed. That way, we'll, we'll detect, is it in sync with the most recent state law? And have we reviewed against that state law?
I can add that information to the file, but I believe it was in 2018 is when we had that reviewed.
I believe you're right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Got it.
Any other?
Any other questions for the guests? Go ahead.
Chief, of the four that were excluded off of this list, can you tell us how that impacts the four that have been removed from that, and were they led to believe? As we see this, I, I watched the Civil Service this morning, and there was no discussion about why that was altered or changed. So, I'm just kind of curious if you can, as these promotions come through, and we'll witness on the police side as well, too, Civil Service approves it, comes to council, council passes it, off we go, and we've moved forward. But can you just, I'm concerned about the impact of where, what we've done from what we did. Can you touch base on that?
Unfortunately, there is an impact to the fire department with this. Due to the new station, of course, we're making promotions, we're doing the reorganization of our department in officers, lieutenants, battalion chiefs. Therefore, we will need to have nine lieutenants. That would be one per shift, per station. So, hence why we wanted a bigger list to choose from. But some of those are already lieutenants, so they'll just continue to be. There weren't nine openings, but there's been a lot of angst on the department, a lot of nervousness, I would say, wondering what's going to happen when the new station opens. And so to relieve those fears, they're really anxious about who's going to be assigned where, who's going to be my officer, those kind of things. So to alleviate that fear, we went ahead and promoted the lieutenants that had an open position for our two stations. For the third station, we need three lieutenants. We went off the list of 14 and chose those three, so that everyone would know, there wouldn't be any tension until the new station opens, everybody feel better, instead of worrying about it and competing against each other. So, we went ahead and told those three that they would be the next lieutenants. Unfortunately, one of them is one of the four that's being cut from the list.
And thank you for that, I appreciate it, because I know since that original list, I knew that we had added the battalion chief category in there, and I knew there was some, some changes, and even personnel has changed a lot. So I thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Yes. But per the law, we have to follow what we have to follow.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, back to the question up there, if there are any other items prior to E16, so on pages one, two, three, and four, any other items, any council members would like to discuss or have questions about?
Mayor, I did just want to note that Renee is on the call now.
Okay, welcome, Renee.
Thank you.
Okay, then, seeing that there are none, we will move on to E16 on page four. Resolution accepting the A Avenue Reconstruction Project. Is that Mike Barcolo?
Yes, Your Honor, so this is just a quick overview. So this is the reconstruction of A Avenue between 11th and 15th Street. This was done by Rachi Construction as the prime in central states, as the paving contractor. The total contract ended at $630,191.55, which was 105% of the total contract, and they did use 67 of the 67 days allotted. There were some additional days where no work was occurring because of the derecho, and we suspended time for that until we were able to get people in there to get the trees out of the way, so that construction could resume.
Okay, questions for Mike? What was the main reason for the overage, Mike?
A lot of it was the fact that the sanitary trench, we had to bring in non-native material. And then we also had some debris removal from the derecho that was part of the contract as well.
Okay, yeah, that was my recollection, that's the debris removal. Just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that. Any other questions on this item? Street looks great. Okay, we'll move on then to page five and six, prior to A2 under the regular agenda. Any items prior to item A2 under the regular agenda? On pages five and six. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, we'll move on to A2 on the regular agenda, which is the Public Hearing on Urban Renewal Plan Amendment.
Your Honor, good evening. On Thursday, we'll have a public hearing on an urban renewal area amendment. We're talking about Collins Road. This is in relation to a development agreement that the city entered into, into 2014 with Medco Holding Companies and the owners of legacy manufacturing companies to assist the development of a 140,000 square foot facility. It's a manufacturing facility that includes office and warehouse. In that development agreement, Medco agreed to provide 16 acres of land in the enterprise, in the Marion Enterprise Center, and that land was financed through a bank loan. In the agreement, the city agreed to use tax increment financing to make annual payments to Medco Holding Companies until that cost of land is fully reimbursed. The city amended the urban renewal area plan to include the project. The way, the way that tax increment financing works is the project has to be named specifically in the plan for the city to be able to use tax increment financing. So the city amended the urban renewal area plan, but that amendment had a cap. In the cap, we had 8,800,000, and that underestimated the financing cost.
Did you repeat that number?
880.
880,000?
Thousand.
Okay.
So that capped the financing, which underestimated the true cost of financing the land. So we're looking at an amendment for the city to be able to honor the development agreement. We're short of about 120, 127,000. So I included in your packet the development agreement and the bank loan payoff letter. So this is going to be the final payment to Medco in relation to this development agreement. So related to this item, there are other resolutions making internal transfer. We're going to be using funds in the Urban Renewal Area Fund. Collins Road, it's been carrying a balance. So that balance, instead of decertify, we're using the fund balance to pay off this commitment.
Is that clear for everyone? Okay, yes, go ahead, Grant.
So the shortfall is 127,074.30. That represents the interest?
This is a payoff.
Okay.
It would be the last payment.
Okay. In the original loan document with Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust, what was the total principal and interest that was cited in, in that at the time, when this was all initiated?
I knew it was just an estimate.
Yeah, I don't think the financing was secured until after the development agreement was approved. We had to amend the urban renewal plan. And if you look in the development agreement itself, the development agreement does not have the limit. It's in the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, which was done earlier. So that's why we're correcting the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, and we don't have to do a subsequent amendment to the development agreement itself.
So the development agreement hold true, just the amendment we need to have to make sure that costs, the project costs, reflect the true financing costs.
And I would say, just to provide some history on the MUC for the city council, when we first started on that project, we were intending to do each parcel this way, where they'd be financed by the, by Medco Holding Company, and ultimately then we would reimburse them for each parcel. But that was at a period where interest rates were really dropping. And so when they initially hired the C, we just financed the whole thing, took it out. That's why there's no, there's no weakness like this on subsequent lots of subsequent projects in the C. Quite sure why we're getting such an echo.
Okay. Anyone else, before we go back to Grant for a second question, anyone else have a question first? Okay, go ahead, Grant.
Just a general process question that may or may not apply to these kinds of projects. Do, do, what's in my mind is, is it seems to me we're coming up to the end of this financial project, and we're just, we're, we're understanding we have this obligation. I'm curious, do we have annual or semi-annual intermediate financial reviews for the projects that we're doing? Wherein, we could have discovered this and attacked this at an earlier date?
Most of our agreements are either straightforward rebates, or else they're direct city debt. So this is an unusual one, where we would have somebody else going out and doing this financing, essentially on our behalf. I think there's one other project out there that we have this on with the Restoration Dental Building, where Medco was assigned the rebate stream on behalf of the company, and basically capitalized it with the bank. So this was an early one, one of the first ones that we did this way, and we've refined our processes since to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Emily. Items A3 through B2 are not marked. Any questions on any of those? Okay, move on to B3, under Public Services. Mr. Miller?
Your Honor and council, item number three and number four on the backside, they're, they're related, but they're separate, separate items. Number three, we're going to go out and solicit bids for the processing and haul-out portion of the waterway operations, or emergency debris removal of the waterways. And so we got a project calendar set, anticipated we'll award those bids the next meeting in January, next formal meeting. So, any questions on that?
Questions for Ryan?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Ryan, would this be basically the same process that was used for processing and removal as we did?
Yeah.
With the core recovery?
Under, under that contract, that was the original contract we had with SDR back in August. We procured that under emergency procedures, and so that since has expired. So we want to go out, get new bids, and get a, get a different contract in place.
Maybe, let me clarify, so when this is operational with whomever, we're still going to be processing, say, at 44th?
Absolutely.
Trucking to, to Wendling, is that?
Same process in place.
That's, that's what I was.
Resoliciting the bids.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, I don't know why, it seems like it's more visible now, but there's a lot there.
There's a lot.
It, it, all of a sudden, it just seems to be more visible to me, the magnitude of what's there in the waterways. Okay, any other questions for Ryan on this one? Number, number four?
Number four, this is actually approving the contract with SDR for the waterway project. It's quite lengthy. Kara wanted to go through it, make sure we got all the female language in it, and we did. And so, we're anticipating this project will go well into the summer. We are bringing on more staff. There is quite a bit of debris in the waterway. With the recent snow event, it has slowed down operations. But again, we are bringing on more crews, hopefully we can double operations and get back to it, and, and get it knocked out, so.
Everyone good with that one, or any questions? All right, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
Onto parks, there is one item. Contract with Point Builders.
Yes, Your Honor, and council, I did want to provide a quick presentation for you guys. What we have here is a, a proven contract with Point Builders for depot repairs that occurred during the deracial storm. This is amount that will be covered under insurance. But we do have some items, we've been working with Marner Gardner and the park board on, on, on some of the repairs to the depot. Keep it in mind, the historic and cultural significance of it, and also keep it in mind, the potential uptown development that could occur in the next few years, making the necessary repairs for the depot building. So I do have a couple slides, and I just wanted to show the council and make sure they're aware of, of the repairs that are being made. So in the front of the original structure, I will say when it was moved here in 1990, it was the, the roof and the, a couple of the columns on the porch, which is the apron around the depot, are the only original items for the depot. The original structure that was built in 1892 only had the porch on one side, the front side of the, of the depot, and then they chose, when they moved it, to put the porch all the way around it. We are proposing to make repairs and only removing the, the porch on the park side completely, eliminating that. And what we would do is, the columns that were not part of the original structure, we would be relaying those, the pavers in front of that building, so it's seamless. It's intentional in making the repairs to the porch, and obviously the repairs to the roof as necessary. If you go to the next slide, some visuals, the other. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, some visuals, uh, the other things that we, we would be doing is. The um, the shutters in between the windows, these are uh, are not structural. They're added in there for um. For aesthetics, uh, they are aging quite uh, quite a lot. Um, and we would remove those uh, which does multiple things. One, uh, brings in more light to the facility, um, and also gives more visual uh, for security purposes. Uh, inside the, uh, inside the depot, which we have uh, dealt with vandalism um, for many years uh, in, into the depot. And we would be keeping the porch off of this. Uh, as you see in the carriage house where we currently have the restrooms and storage, uh, we would be repairing uh, that part of the roof. And capping it off uh, straight to the building, uh, more of a hip, hip style uh, roof. If you go to the next slide. And that's just a visual from the side of it, we would be taking the porch all the way to the side, so it's on three sides of the building. Uh, to the next slide. On the front side, uh, again, uh, making the repairs to the roof, uh, and then taking out of, of the center. Shingles uh, in the window structure, providing more light, uh, and also uh, keeping a nesting away. Uh, that occurs uh, in that facility or in those areas uh, for birds. But this is a, a, pretty much will stay the same on this side, um, as, as it's seen today. Uh, the next slide, uh, this is a view of the side and this is uh, discussions uh, with the park board. Uh, on whether or not we, we take the gable or take the porch all the way to just one side or. Uh, finished it and it was decided to try to, to finish it all the way through uh, to, to this side. And so we, we ended it right there at the corner of the building and that will be uh, tied back in uh, to the rest of the structure, keeping it seamless. Uh, and being purposeful, uh, and trying to keep it as original as possible. Uh, when we talk about the original structure, um, it was only had the, only had the porch on one side of the, of the depot. And so we wanna try to be as original as possible, keeping the historic and cultural significance. Uh, integrity of the building as much as possible and uh, that is the, the general goal. Uh, and then also keeping in mind um, the future development uh, that could occur um, down the road. Not wanting to uh, put in place uh, a porch or uh, anything on the front side that will just be taken down in a couple of years. So um, I did wanna uh, let Council know of, of these uh, repairs being made. Uh, and right now, uh, in the contract, we have a completion date uh, in the middle of April, which would be. In time for um, the event and special events uh, that take place in City Square Park uh, this summer, so. Any questions?
Yes, Randy has a question.
Seth, I have a, a few questions here, um, can you show us again the renditioning of the north side of the building? Where the um, side of the roof?
I think it's the second or third slide, Terrell. So yes, uh, so that, um.
My question on that Seth is, is we utilize that. That canopy out there for the arts in the park, um, all of our, as you well know, you knew this question was coming, right? And then also too, what, I mean, this quite, this is very ugly in my opinion, looking at this the way it is, even with the. Corrections made to it, so you're saying the pavers and everything would be removed off of that uh, in, with some type of anticipation with the future holds without really?
So, no, no. The pavers would actually stay in place, uh, so what would be, uh, we would just not be replacing the, putting the porch back on to the front side. Of the building and so what we would do is actually where the columns were existing, uh, we would take those below grade. In uh, put the pavers back in, uh, relay the pavers, so everything is uh, is flush, uh, accessible uh, for that. Um, and we were thinking about um, uh, keeping in mind uh, the special events and everything that occurs. One, uh, the inside of the facility is used, uh, you know, something that does benefit. Uh, this is now with the, the porch uh, not being there is for those special events, the vendors can actually be in on the inside. Of the, of the uh, facility and use, use those windows to as, as um, um, as serving locations. But it also uh, provides, um, you know, we have a lot of tents we do for, for those events too that uh, can be placed out, out there. You know, I, I know with uh, uh, stuff like this, and this is kind of a struggle, is um. Anything we do uh, to the depot, um, we're not gonna make anyone, everyone happy. Uh, and um, that's something we're uh, continually trying to uh, uh, try to do something that's uh, best for. For everyone involved and, and keeping that in mind and um, you know, obviously we wanna uh, do as much as we can. On, on, on the repairs and everything else and uh, this is, was the avenue that we, we uh, felt was gonna be the best fit. Uh, for the park and for the, for the events going on and uh, and for the future.
Is there any chance Seth that we did not have enough insurance on that to cover all of these losses or is there something that's. Pushing us to not put that roof back up?
Um, you know, for the porch, uh, you know, yeah, there, I mean, insurance is covering uh, up to eighty-four thousand. So I mean, there will be some, um, you know, a financial shortage if we did add the full porch back uh, to there. Uh, which we could always go uh, towards FEMA and, and request funding from FEMA uh, for that. Um, the other uh, um, the other reason really is, is what I. Uh, the other reason why we didn't add the porch is just really um, uh, decision from, from the park board and. And working with Martin Gardner as far as what, what we can do to make those repairs uh, necessary and, and, and also in a timely fashion too. As we uh, as we look towards uh, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you Seth, I appreciate it.
Um, so, I understand this was, this was decided by, by the Parks Board, right?
Yes.
Okay, it, um. Is it, is it? Sounded like you were saying that. Part of the reasoning is to allow more light into the. Inside of the building, because I think there's a general feeling that it's dark in there, not very inviting. Uh, in terms of prior, prior to the deracial, the way it was, that there was very dark in there. So uh, this, this will help with that?
Yeah, this, and I'll, I'll be honest, Mayor, this is, this is really a re- a repair work. You know, there's, needs to be some future visioning, uh, as, as we look at uh, the plaza and, and um. As, as that project uh, moves forward, uh, you know, there really needs to be revisioning uh, for the depot. For better, better usefulness, you know, um, there is lack of light, uh, it's, it's not a, um. One of the most attractive uh, facilities to, to rent, but the location is, is great. There is huge historical and cultural significance to this facility. But yeah, uh, main, the biggest reasons for uh, removal of those is one, um, you know, they're uh, dilapidated. Shutters, um, and it's gonna also provide more light and security uh, for inside the facility, inside the uh, pavilion.
Okay, other que- yeah, go ahead, Grant.
Seth, and uh, Your Honor, I, I agree that the interior of the facility is, is kinda dark and gloomy. And so I can see the objective of uh, removing the shutters, one consideration that. May, maybe necessary is uh, with a lack of shutters or, or perhaps uh, half windows. There, under a rainstorm condition or snow condition, you're gonna have a lot of precipitation that potentially can blow into the facility. Which then subsequently creates a different maintenance headache that we uh, may or may not uh, currently have. So I would just uh, want some consideration of perhaps as part of future visioning. Uh, that there would be a half-size translucent or transparent windows putting up or halves to replace those shutters to. To uh, eliminate the precipitation ingress.
Absolutely.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that was my concern too, is, is you're basically taking it from a dry pavilion to. Now if it's raining, it's, and the wind's blowing correctly, it's most of the time probably, it's gonna be wet inside there. Especially with taking those shutters away all the way to the top, so I'm, I'll echo what Grant said that it might be good to. Add something uh, to the top where the shutters are to try and keep some of the moisture out.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you're right though that, you know, that, no, no, uh. No action plan is gonna be acceptable to everybody, I mean, you know, this, it's just a matter of um. Uh, personal preference, personal taste, you know, I mean, two people, no two people, you know, would agree on, on everything, so. Yeah, you know, if, if the Parks Board was all in favor of this plan, I guess I, you know, I don't, I personally don't. Object to it.
Well, I think something to keep in mind too is, is, you know, what's important or historically significant about. From the original structure was, was the top roof and then a couple of the columns of, um. Are part of the original structure and we saved those columns uh, during the deracial cleanup. And so those should be uh, implemented back in, into the depot. Um, and as we look towards the future visioning of, of this uh, facility, um. You know, that's, I think that's where we really need to have conversations on, on, in. Uh, long conversations about, you know, what, what the actual use of the facility aesthetically. Uh, while also uh, keeping the integrity, uh, the historic, historical integrity intact, so.
And the funding is insurance coverage? Randy alluded to that, but, okay, just to make sure everybody understands that. Yes, go ahead.
Seth, I'm sorry, I had just one quick um, follow-up question. In your reconstruction, is there talk about changing those sulfur lights out? Part of the, part of the reason that is so dark in there is those old style lights that are in there. Is that being talked about as far as getting those updated to LEDs that, cause that will enhance the. Lighting in there dramatically if we could fold that in there at this time?
Yeah, I could, I could take a look at the, I know we have some electrical work that's uh, that needs to be done inside there. Uh, some conduit that, that fell, obviously we've had a, a damage to those, to those lights from, from vandalism and, and uh. I, I haven't looked uh, most recently to see if there was damage to the lights from the storm, storm related. Uh, but we can uh, I could check on that for you and, and have a, a better answer for you on Thursday.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, that's it for parks, onto engineering, item E one is marked for discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, so E one, E two and E three are all the, the same topic, um, so E one is the um. The actual request coming from the public library, um, requesting the two ten-minute parking stalls in front of. The temporary library location on Seventh Avenue. E two is the public comment period that we will have on Thursday to let the public comment on whether they feel this should be appropriate or not. It's not a public hearing, it's just a public comment period. And then E three is receiving and filing the tack report that is recommending putting in the temporary parking. And then E four is the resolution approving the two short-term ten-minute parking spaces. So I would be um, open to any questions that the Council has.
Questions for Mike, yes, go ahead, Colette.
Uh, I don't know if this is necessarily a question for Mike, but maybe something that I, I would recommend is. That we hold tight on this and get um, some feedback from our uptown business owners and um. Their feedback I think would be important in making a decision, I don't know that's part of the tack process, so. I'd like to hold tight and ask Brooke to talk to those folks and bring that information back before we make a decision.
Yeah, so Brooke has been looped into this and she has sent this, the same letter that I, we actually physically mailed. Um, they were also emailed, so the, the business owners and the property owners have been notified. Um, I know that the library has also reached out to some of the adjacent property owners as well to get their input on it. Um, and so far, I believe we received one letter um, in support of it.
One letter in support?
Correct.
And none with concerns?
Not yet.
Okay.
My, I, I, my understanding is um, that we, she hasn't maybe had an opportunity to get, collect that feedback quite yet. And was hoping to have a little more time to do that because of the holidays, so.
Is there a, a particular rush on it or can we? Give it some time?
This is, this is Kelly from, very high, um, I, I think the. This has been something that patrons have been requested since we've been at Seventh, but as far as a particular deadline. No, there's not a deadline in place, um, we do on a fairly regular basis get upset patrons that come in. Just with the, I think the nature of our business is in that location, we are never going to be a business where people come in and spend. Any amount of time, it's really gonna be a pickup location, so what we're hearing is, um, we have. Patrons with mobility issues and then other patrons with little kiddos that um, aren't able to park in that. On that block of the street, um, so they have to get their kiddos out or um, again, have mobility issues and have to park far away for a. A very quick visit, um. So there's no deadline, um, the only other thing I wanna point out is, um. I have noticed there is no handicap parking or any loading zones on that part of the street. Um, and so, even if it wasn't a library loading zone, if we could get either a handicap parking or a. Loading zone in that part of the block that, you know, might be open to other businesses, that would, that would also be very helpful.
Okay, thanks for sharing that perspective, any questions for Mike or, or Kelly? Go ahead, Grant.
So I, based on what Colette had shared, it seems to me that it would be advantageous to provide it to some additional time. For uh, Brooke, uh, either to receive commentary or to do any additional outreach is, is that. A reasonable action to take here for, and just hold off for a couple of weeks and then bring this back?
So if you wanted to do that, I would recommend leaving the public comment period open and just continue it.
That, that sounds like a great strategy. Yeah.
Okay, so we would receive and file. The request and then um. Open a public comment period and just leave it open?
Yeah, that's what the Council chooses to do.
And that would be for E three also?
Yeah, it's up to you, I mean, you can, the tack report's not gonna change based on public opinion, it's just based on the actual. Recommendation, so it's up to you, you can table E three or you could um, continue with E three. E four is the actual making of the decision, so that one you would either wanna table or accept that one.
Okay, so they understand what the options are for Thursday? Okay, all right, any further questions on this item? All right, yes, go ahead, Will.
Mike, are we able to get the copy of the letter that was sent in that was in the favor of that? And if anything comes in that's opposed, if we could get a copy of that too, please?
Yeah, Rachel or myself will give all that document to Council.
Thank you.
I was gonna send those out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, good question. Okay, if there's nothing else on this item, E four through E twelve are not marked for discussion. Any of those items, uh, particular interest that people would like to discuss? Or any questions on any of those items, E four through E twelve? Okay, otherwise we'll move on to E thirteen.
E thirteen and E fourteen are regarding the old foundations for the two houses that were moved. Um, so since we already had Boomerang and Central Stages contractors onsite, it didn't. It didn't make sense to go out and bid that, so we did it as a change order, so Boomerang. Removed the existing foundations and filled in the hole. Central States came in on the site and poured back the concrete patches in the street for the water disconnects. So one is a change order for seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents for the removal of foundations. And backfilling the material, and then the change order with Central States is for almost two thousand dollars. And that's to pour back the two patches for the water shut offs.
Okay, questions on that, yes, go ahead.
Mike, on those, because they are just listed as change orders and we didn't go out for bid, do we know if those are close to what? Engineers' estimates would be, or did we even do that, or can you just educate the council as to how that? Without bidding it out?
So how we did this was called time and material. So our representative, Bush Construction and the foreman onsite would keep track of how many hours each piece of equipment. Tonnage tickets from the trucks to bring stuff in and out. And just tabulate it all in this case because we didn't know what that number was gonna be. Obviously, it's a little more expensive to come in and clean up an area, rather than just demo the whole thing. So originally, we did have bids that were about twenty thousand dollars each for a complete demolition of the structures. But following council's direction to save the structures, there's a little more expense with that.
Thank you.
So we would have, Mike, we would have had additional expense for disposing of the debris, wouldn't we have? So was that part of the bid?
We did have this publicly bid back when we got the proposal to move the two buildings. And I believe it was about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars total for demolition, so that'd be a total of about fifty thousand dollars. Here we're paying about eighty thousand dollars just for the cleanup, so it is a little bit more, but it's a little bit more complex.
Although we had approved the assistance package to the. To the developer for a hundred thousand dollars that was. Not, not used. Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, well, you, Your Honor, you just answered the question I had is, is whose scope of work was this originally? I think it might have been the developers, but then because of the change of condition with them. We didn't have to provide support, but we inherited this work scope, is that a way to think about it? I guess the question is, who had, who originally had the foundation removal is on their punch list of things to do?
The house mover.
Okay, all right.
I, I didn't hear the answer, sorry.
The house mover.
The house mover, okay. Okay, other questions? All right, on to community development. F1 and 2 are not marked, any questions on those? Okay, F3.
Item number three is a public hearing on Thursday regarding the request to vacate an alleyway. One of the things that we do as we proceed with these alley vacations is we generally have a clear. Context to what the alley is and when it was established. We got checking around on this and we were having a very difficult time to, to determine if it was ever an alley. But we, looking at it and kind of analyzing it, we figured it was. We've did a little due diligence on it, we've been working with the legal team on it, we did send it to the county, the county's kicked it back to us at this point and said. We're not a hundred percent it was an alley, so we're still kind of getting some information on the actual. Ownership of this piece, it really has none at this point as, as, as we understand it, so. We run into this occasionally throughout the city and some of the older parts of town where there's a lot of. Irregular subdivisions, which means they were never final platted and they have been back from who knows how long ago, even into the eighteen hundreds. So I, I would ask that we continue the public hearing, hold the public hearing because we've done the notices and continue the hearing on Thursday. Until we get some more information, and then we'll go ahead and remove the next resolution regarding the vacation. Of the alleyway until we have more information to be able to provide every, we don't wanna. Assume ownership, sell the property that we may not own. That would be bad, but at this point, even the county was concerned that they, they have no record of ownership either, so. If you recall, even the property here south of City Hall and east of Vernon. Where the trail went, we had to go through a process to acquire that piece, just because there was no known. Owner at the time, so that, it's a, it's a quiet title proceeding, I'm sure I'm using some legal terms that. I'm doing just fine, so there you go, so, so, so anyway. It just may be a process, the good thing is, and I think this is a positive, is not many times when we do an alley vacation is everybody. In a neighborhood supportive of the vacation and everybody was supportive of the vacation, so we thought this was gonna be a slam dunk and. Of course, it, it isn't, so, anyway, we'll work through it, but since we did the notice, I think it's important that we proceed with the public hearing and, and just. Allow folks in the neighborhood to express themselves and we can, we can bring it back at the next meeting if we need and, and, and. You know, we just won't close it, so the public hearing will be at the next meeting and we can kind of present to the council what our findings are. I mean, then we don't have to reestablish notice either, which is, which is good for everyone.
Questions, yes, go ahead.
Tom, just a comment, in the applicant's application. I can't believe I said that, applicant's application. The lot size is referenced as twenty feet by sixty feet equalling a hundred and twenty square feet, I think it should be twelve hundred in the application.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted that, at such point, somebody's buying and somebody's selling, you have the right square footage.
Absolutely.
It might be a bargain.
Yep, we'll make, I'll make sure that, I'll check the notice, too, to make sure that.
Any additional questions on that item? All right, on to F5, for the, for that, I'll turn it over to the deputy mayor pro temp.
I better pay attention, suddenly I'm on. Right, so, yes, please proceed.
So, speaking of notice requirements and public notice and legal descriptions. F5 through, I believe. Down through F8 are, are items that the, are, are items that the council. Heard and, and, and convened on and, and actually ruled on in December. Unfortunately, the, the notice and the legal description of the property for the rezoning that was published was, was not the correct. Notice or legal description. And we found that out a little late. So what we did at the last city council meeting, we rescinded all the action. We've republished the public hearing and we proceeded to bring back those items, I, I think in the staff report, I'm sure everybody's. Seen and recalls the conversations that were had, but because of the legal notice and the. Incorrect legal description, we have to redo that hearing process, so. Unless there's questions, though, I wasn't really going to go through all of that, again, we do have the slides and iCompass. And the information is there, if folks do have a desire to speak on that topic on Thursday. We were provided, I know Susan is on the call, we were provided incorrect legal description, but we also. Did not follow up and, and, and do that, so like, there's no blame really to be had here, except that it's just something we have to do.
Any questions? Miss Grant.
Did, did we have to replacard the neighborhood to cite another public hearing date?
Yes, we can, yep, yep. We just, we, what we basically did is started, started over with legal notice, it happens from time to time over the years, we've had a few of them. It, what will likely happen on Thursday, there'll be a lot of confusion, there'll be folks that'll probably wanna know what's changed, why are we back here? And so we'll, we'll, we'll take that in stride, I guess, and, and move forward with it.
Anybody else, questions, discussion? Thanks, Randy. Okay, back to the mayor.
Does that cover six, seven, and eight also?
Yes, it does.
Okay, under other department discussion, we have a discussion regarding compensation philosophy statement.
That is me, thank you, Your Honor. So as we are looking to build out a more formalized compensation framework, we wanted to provide a high-level look at few of the components. Of a typical compensation structure and essentially what guidance we'll be looking for from councils as we move forward. Some of you may be very well versed in the world of compensations and others may know just the basics. So in kind of order to get everyone to the starting line of this, I wanted to share some information around compensation philosophy. What it is and why we need it, as well as some of the key considerations we'll need to weigh as we build out this framework, so next slide, please, Terrell. Next slide. So this is a long definition and I'm gonna read it so I don't leave anything out, but a compensation philosophy. Is a description of the objectives, guidelines, and principles on which compensation policies, programs, systems, and practices are based. It answers why a compensation program is designed or functions as it does, or will in the future. It forms the foundation for making decisions and communicating them both internally and externally. This philosophy will serve as our roadmap for everything related to compensation and how we communicate it. Next slide, Terrell. So next slide, thanks. So what is a compensation philosophy statement? Well, as the title suggests, it is a formal, high-level statement. Explaining the why behind employee compensation and provides overall direction in both how and why decisions relative to compensation are made. I, one analogy I like in it, too, is if your compensation framework is an organization or a company. The compensation philosophy statement is kind of the equivalent of a mission statement, it's very high level, it's very simple, but definitely with a defined purpose. Next slide. So why do we need it? Organizations establish and implement both compensation philosophy and a compensation philosophy statement for a number of reasons. First, and perhaps the most obvious, it provides a transparent commitment to employees to pay them for their work. Second, it allows for consistency in application, meaning similarly situated employees will be evaluated and measured. Against the same criteria and then will be compensated as outlined in the framework. Third, again, pretty obvious, it's a mechanism to attract talent. What candidates are looking for in a job opportunity is pretty personal. Some are looking to work close to home, others are working, looking for upward nobility. But a competitive salary is usually one of the top three factors that candidates are looking for when they're considering new job opportunities. It's also a means to retain employees, we spend a lot of time and money recruiting, interviewing, and training employees. And we wanna make sure our employees stay and are happily engaged in their work. It also ensures pay is equitable, so simply stated, it's equal pay for equal work. Relative to internal equity throughout this organization, and then ultimately it supports the strategic plan and goals of an organization. Next slide, please, Terrell. So key considerations. Sorry about my email. So looking ahead, a couple of the considerations we're gonna be looking at are pay for performance. Market strategy, creative compensation strategy, and our total rewards package, and I'm gonna touch on each of these briefly. Next slide, next slide. So first, we, this is probably the biggest question that we're gonna need to ask ourselves is, do we want to implement a true pay-for-performance model? Meaning employees are rewarded and incentivized for achieving a specific performance level or predetermined goals. Again, this is probably the biggest decision that we need to, to answer, there's certainly pros and cons to. Implementing a performance strategy that's based on a performance, I'm sorry, performance-based. If we choose not to implement this model, then our compensation framework becomes relatively simple in its administration. If we do implement it, it's a little more dynamic and complex, but it could definitely position us as employer of choice in the area. Another option that we could consider is a simple cost of living adjustment. Just on an annual basis, these strategies are truly designed to keep compensation stagnant and simply account for inflation year over year. Another alternative we could take a look at is making a flat percentage pay adjustment across the board, so for example, three percent year over year for all employees. And that would be regardless of individual performance. There's also the, the possibility of combining, combining a couple of these models. Next slide. Next slide, yeah, thanks. The next question, and this is a big one, too, is where do we wanna be at relative to the market? I gave you this visual just to kind of illustrate what I'm talking about. In this example, we can see the median salary for a data scientist in New York is a hundred and fifty-six thousand and change. As an employer, we wanna ask ourselves, do we wanna lead the market and perhaps target the ninetieth percentile for base compensation? Do we need to be at market, or are there any instances where it makes sense to even lag the market? Which actually leads me to my next question, is would we want to implement a blanket, kind of a one-size-fits-all approach where we say. We're gonna hire all positions at seventy-fifth, the seventy-fifth percentile of market. Or do we wanna be a bit more flexible to have position-specific targets? That would enable us to lead the market for harder-to-fill positions. And pay at, or even again below market if it makes sense at that time. So these are just a couple of the things that we'll wanna have a discussion around at the onset of creating this more formalized comp structure. Next slide. Creative compensation strategy, next slide, so these two, I'm gonna move on, just touch on quickly. First is our creative compensation strategy, this is a list of some things to, that other considerations, sorry, other organizations are doing to augment. Their compensation structure, typically, there's usually a cost or expense associated with these, these additional perks, but not always. Flexible schedules during four 10-hour days has become pretty popular, or implementing summer hours. Walking meetings, I don't know how that would work with COVID right now, but there are some, if we got really creative, that we could take a look at to kind of. Again, augmenting our, our compensation and rewards program. Next slide. Next slide, sorry, and then lastly, I just wanted to share this image of what is typically included in a total reward strategy. Obviously, pay and benefits are usually the first thing that come to mind relative to total rewards, but there's other, other elements. Such as recognition, growth and development, work-life balance, or I think it's blend, now they're calling it work-life blend. That we could consider, and all of these areas factor in to create a true people strategy. That, what's, which is sole purpose is to ultimately attract, retain, and I always add engage top talent. So that is all I had, I don't know, Lon, if you wanted to piggyback on that, or if certainly there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any. But again, I, we just kind of wanted to tee up the conversation that this is what we're looking at and how, what we'll be looking at for council to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten, Lon, do you have anything to add before we take questions?
Yeah, I think, you know, what we're really looking for from council is, is we start to draft a compensation philosophy, if there's anything that you have that you feel like. Is, has to be in there, what do you think needs to be in that as we draft it? It really wasn't our intent to throw it out and have all of you try to wordsmith the entire thing on your own, but we thought that we would take a crack at drafting one. Or maybe even a, a short one and a long one to bring back for the city council to review, but we wanted to pick your brains first before we launch into that and see. Okay, are there things in there that you just strongly feel about that are non-negotiable that have to be in this statement as we look to craft the initial draft? The other questions that we've outlined are ones that we'll be getting into as we really start to create a new compensation. System beyond the ones that we have now, I think one of the things that all the council certainly know and that we realize internally is that. You know, you can't take a system that we had originally adopted in ninety-four that's been tweaked a couple of times and then really apply it as a blanket. Across the entire organization, as we get more sophisticated in how we approach HR, as how we map out. Career strategies and career paths for people through the organization, one of the things that we've had to realize is just that. We're different than we were, we were fifteen years ago, as you look at the organization now and you look at maybe who's in some of the leadership posts. Promotional opportunities are not going to be there, perhaps, the way that they were when I first came into the organization. There are people here that could be here for a very long time, so how do we keep employees engaged, but also recognize the fact that. You can't just keep raising base compensation year after year after year into infinity, so that means you gotta be more creative. You've gotta do things that actually work. So that means you've got to be more creative, you've got to do things that actually work for new generations coming into the workforce to make sure that we keep people here and that we keep talented people here.
Great. Questions for either Kirsten or Lon? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
So one of the things that, as I thought about today's discussion around this and recognizing that we have work to do on that, I started thinking of a couple of potential precursors that will inform perhaps the character and breadth of options that we might ultimately respond to. And the precursors that I got to thinking about is, you know, where do we sit relative to our own assessment of where we stand on a compensation management maturity model today? And there are some standard models, and I think Kirsten, you probably are exceptionally tuned into those. But what those are is, it is a structured way to evaluate how sophisticated you are in terms of managing compensation. And in parallel with that, there are also performance management maturity models that may, you know, understanding kind of where we sit against a, a model assessing that. Once we understand our, our inherent capabilities, that then may point us to one or more of the defined strategies that you've already illuminated in terms of which ones we start with first. And then, as we mature over time, we broaden ourselves out or we become more sophisticated in our compensation management. What I guess I'm just saying is, these things all are interrelated in a system, and I would just caution us not necessarily to look at any one in isolation from other components that are important to understand how our organization is functioning. And, and, you know, I'd certainly welcome further discussion on that, and maybe that's part of what we do as we define all this.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Compensation can be tricky. I was teasing Lon today. You either give a little bit, very high level, or you give all of it. There, there's very little in between, but you're exactly right. This is one piece of a much bigger puzzle of the employee lifecycle, you know, from recruiting and talent acquisition to onboarding, to compensation, to growth and development. It's, it's, it's much bigger, but it's, it's almost a cart before the horse. I, I do think that, you know, I'm sorry, it's a chicken and the egg, which comes first. We need to take a, you know, kind of a current state of the state. What do we have right now? What do we want to keep and what do we want to scrap? Whatever we implement needs to be scalable for growth. But there are a lot of moving parts, a lot of tools, a lot of systems. There's a lot of, this is, this is a pretty big in terms of magnitude, for sure.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. I, I'm, I want to echo again to what Grant said. I have never been a big fan of the pay-for-performance concept because I figure I, in my professional background, your performance should be completely separate from the pay. And I think it's a little too early to ask the council exactly what direction we want to go without having more of a comprehensive understanding as to what our compensation plan looks like and what we're going to build it on going forward, because I, I, I think we put too much leverage on the pay-for-performance. I sometimes feel as if though the pay-for-performance comes around, we do everybody in a bulk. I don't know if true attention is being given at the time. I don't think a true evaluation's done on the individuals. That just supports the reason why I don't like the pay-for-performance rather than to use a standardized process where it's cost of living and the state of the city's budget, what will allow it to move forward with that. But truly do the reviews at the annual review and let the reviews be a review. And disciplinary action can be taken upon the individual at that time where it is not reflecting pay and crossing those lines. So I've never been a fan of that. I hope we move from that and I as well would like to have more conversation and discussion about that particular one. It seems as if though we move swiftly and looking for a direction and there's not a lot of discussion about it again, and we move on and we find ourselves right back where we were again, having a conversation. But with this comprehensive study that we have out and the age of it and how old it is, I, we, we still have a little bit of work to do here, I think.
Yeah, Lon, I don't know if you want to chime in, and I'm sorry if I was not clear. I don't know that we were looking for an answer tonight at all. This is just kind of the things that, that we're looking at and things that we'll look to you guys for going forward. But certainly, decision tonight.
We fully expect that this one is going to be a journey that's going to take a while. And the, but the feedback like you were, you were just giving, Randy, as we start to look at a success or strategy is exactly the kind of things that we're going to be looking for, because you have strongly held opinions on it. If the rest of the council feels the same way, then what we're going to do to shape compensation going forward is going to look radically different than it does today. And we don't want to get ahead of ourselves and start going down a path to present something in front of you that none of you are going to be willing to endorse or that nobody is comfortable with. So we know there's definitely issues with the ones that we have. We want to make sure that whatever we put in place is going to fix it and going to address that, but also make sure that it's something like I alluded to earlier that is long-term, going to be financially sustainable for the community. I think the council has seen in, in the last couple of years that some of the property tax changes that were made back in 2017 are starting to roost. I mean, the city is realizing the long-term impacts of those changes. And, you know, we don't have necessarily the year-over-year financial flexibility or resources that we did have. So we have to be much more sophisticated about using what we have very strategically and making sure that we're maximizing every dollar for the benefit of the citizens. But we didn't expect answers today. We didn't expect answers on Thursday, but wanted to get the conversation primed. And also, to what Grant was talking about earlier, what other information would you like us to assemble for you as we start moving through this so that you feel like you can make educated decisions?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that everyone feels as strongly as council member Sernat does about the paper for performance, but my sense is, over the last, whatever years that I've been involved here, my sense is, is that there's at least some feeling by, by, by council members that, that it's kind of automatic. Whether that's true or just perception, I don't know. But there's that kind of feeling that it's kind of an automatic thing and where it's not, may not be working as it's envisioned. Would that be accurate, you think? Yeah?
Oh, totally. And, you know, in my deal, just for clarity, it doesn't mean that we say that there's a fixed 3%. It would be whatever's determined within the, the strength of the budget, you know, for the city. If, if some employees are working based on profit sharing, it's clearly that. If there's no profit sharing, there's no bonus or there's no wage increases. And, you know, when we take a look, if you, I kind of quickly went through the last 10 years and, you know, if you're looking anywhere between a 2 and a 3% rate increase, I don't think some type of standardized system would be too far off the mark. I just think there should be more clarity in a true review of an individual based on their work is completely separate from their pay. And that's, that's where I stand with that. And, you know, because they, it's important for people to get a true undivided attention of the supervisor of the individuals doing the review on their work and not trying to run all 240-some employees through in a four-week period and trying to evaluate their work and determine what their pay grade's going to be. If we were to take a look at it from a standardized deal, I think we would find that there'd be more strength in the review itself on the individual basis. But that, again, that's way down the road and I, I don't want to muddy the waters, but I wanted to make it clear that I'm not suggesting that we set in stone a percentage and we follow that percentage. But there will be things that we have to consider. Cost of living is cost of living. And if we can at least maintain cost of living, that will affect the integrity of retention. And, you know, there's, there's just many folds and facets to this, and I think we need a lot more information, like Grant said. And, you know, it will be, it would be a change. I totally get that. But I, yeah. And I'm sorry for the long rambling there, your honor. I just want to make sure I'm clear that I'm not in favor of, of reducing everybody collectively or increasing everybody collectively and, and doing it in a fashion that would not be very, very important to our deal. But if we historically went back, I think we'd find that there would be a pattern that we do follow and, and I don't think it would be that far off the mark, but.
There are definitely pros and cons to pay for performance and not. And I think that, you know, given the opportunity, I'd like to share those for, for your consideration on, on both sides. We need to do what makes sense. Compensation can also be as simple or as complicated as we want or need it to be. So that's all the information that we need to delve into to, like I said, make a decision that, that works for council and for the employees in here.
The fact that we're even at this point of having this discussion and, and going, going down the road of being planful and, and so thoughtful about all of this, I think just shows, it's a reflection of how far we have matured as a city and how, how, that we are growing up and we're needing to have these conversations and we're able to get to a point where we can have these conversations. So it's all, it's all good. It's a, it's a, it's a good sign. Yes, go ahead, Colette.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. I'm hopeful that as we do continue to move forward, that we're looking at more than just salaries, that we are looking at the total package. And this is new term for me, the creative compensation strategies. But in essence, right, being able to provide benefits that are different than a pay increase, and it might be different based on individual and what, what matters to them. So I think that would be certainly something I would like to see as we move forward in creating a, a philosophy for the city of Marion.
Good point. Anyone else?
Mayor? Yes, if, if you guys can hear me, I'd like to chime in.
Who is this? I'm sorry.
It's Renee.
Oh, hi, Renee. Sorry, your voice didn't, didn't recognize the voice. So, go ahead, Renee.
Sorry, I'll turn my phone up. Yeah, I think really coming on the heels of what Colette said, that's where I wanted to take this. I would love to, you know, I know this, in theory, seems difficult, and maybe it is, but I would like to offer some kind of continuum of compensation where, you know, some people have different needs. Some people might want to see more of their overall compensation happening in their salary. Maybe they're, you know, for whatever reason, some people might want to have more of their compensation based in professional development and attending conferences and school reimbursement or licensure accreditation, et cetera. Some people might care more about flexibility and remote work. And so I know it's hard to try to make those things equal, but it would be neat to be able to approach people with what their needs are in terms of retention and, and growth as well as cost savings, because some things are less expensive than others. And so I think it would be neat to have kind of a menu of how people's compensation is put together rather than everybody gets 3% this year kind of thing. I also know that when we look at the budget every year, different departments, I think this came up last year, have different pots of money or percentages of money that they allocate toward professional development, et cetera. And I would like that to be a little more equitable and in line with our compensation strategy. Oh, and I meant to put in health benefits to that equation as well, because, you know, for example, I work more as a consultant. I have no retirement. I have no health benefits. I don't need the health benefits because my spouse has them. So to be able to allow people to make those kinds of customizations, I think, could go a long way in terms of gratification and retention and maybe not cost as much for each person. So the whole package, I think, as part of the compensation philosophy and looking at the individual and where they're at would be something I'd be a big proponent of.
I love that idea, Renee. I mean, like I was alluding to earlier, employment is intensely personal. You know, what's important to people varies, you know, from time to time. And kind of have this à la carte compensation is, is, that's a really neat idea.
Cool. I'm sure it wouldn't be easy, so, sorry for that. But I do, I do think it's, you know, it's just in terms of being innovative, it's something that would set us apart and, and make more people happy and maybe save a little money at the end of the day.
Yeah, I think that that's fantastic. And one thing, just really quick, I, my understanding is historically, we used to do total compensation statements. And then we, we stopped. I'd like to bring that up again, because I think it's important for our employees to understand total compensation, not just their base pay. We have extraordinary benefits here. Extraordinary benefits. And I, I think that there's a, I think that they should just have the statement so they can see it, so.
Yeah, I like that. I like that a lot.
Hey, thank you. I, I think this has been a great conversation and a great start to a very positive process. Hopefully, it's going to lead us down a positive path. So any further comments, questions, input on this topic before we move on? All right. Thank you, Kirsten. Thank you, Lon. Next, we have a discussion regarding non-conforming structures and uses. So that's back to Mr. Trey Harn. So, oh, I want to. Can we put one for Renee in her mailbox?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Oh, I, I get two?
Target.
Yes, good evening. So what I really wanted to do was provide the council an overview of, of non-conforming uses, building and structures, and how they are regulated within the code. And, and there's two reasons. One specifically that's been brought up recently is the, the storage facilities that have actively been pursuing certain zoning districts. And there's been a change, so there will be the creation of some non-conforming uses within the community. We've created them before when we did the central corridor overlay. There's been non-conforming uses created with, with, with zoning that we've adopted. But that's the one, the other is, and I think it's even a bigger part of this conversation is that with the ratio, we're running into non-conforming buildings that have been damaged and there's a percentage associated with that damage to which they may or may not be able to rebuild in their current state. So there's, there, it's twofold. Most of what we've been dealing with in regard to ratio hasn't been too major of a concern, and we haven't had many issues with it. But I, I do think it's just something that we, as we walk through here to, to keep on your, at the, at the top of mind. Over the years, we've not had to use this code provision very often. When we've had damage from a natural disaster, act of God as, as identified in the, in the, in the ordinance, it's generally been in newer areas and we haven't lost a lot of structures holistically. I just, growing up, I remember in our community, we had a tornado go right down one of the busiest areas of town and we lost all kinds of businesses and homes and industries. And, and so I could see where they probably went through the same situation. Well, what do our ordinances say? And you go to those provisions of the code, which you just don't look at very often, and you have to get kind of brought up to speed on them, which we have done internally, and I'm going to provide more information to the council as well on that. And we've got some things that we probably need to tweak a little bit within our codes. I also want the council to know that I've provided you with both the code sections. I'm not going to, I didn't spell it out verbatim. I didn't use the legalese. It's included in the ordinance. I'm just kind of high-level, broad brushing it through this presentation. I did sit down with Mr. Green and another individual whose name is really escaping me for the moment, but that was, that were, that, that have spoke or provided letters to the council regarding non-conforming structures and the rebuild of them relative to storage garages. So they have the material that you have. I had a conference call with them, a Zoom meeting, if you will, over the, over the last couple of weeks. And so they're aware of the situation that exists. And I, I think they were a little more comfortable, not a lot, but a little more comfortable with the conversation, having this information. So I'm hoping that this provides that information for the council as well. So I think it's important as we talk about a non-conforming uses, building, and structures, and we'll talk about the definitions, but I, I think it's, this is critical, I think, is the purpose of the code section. And I think this has been a question from day one on, from the folks that are like, well, you know, why are you regulating non-conforming uses? Well, the, the purpose of the code is to provide for regulation of, of non-conforming building structures, lots and uses, and to specify those circumstances. And to specify those circumstances and conditions under which the non-conforming building structures and uses shall be gradually eliminated upon reaching the end of their life. Period. The idea is that when a use is can establish as a non-conforming use in a zoning district is that it goes away. I mean, that's, that's why that zoning is being put in place. Is we're changing the zoning to intentionally, planfully, ensure that the uses that are in that area over time are not there anymore. And I think the corridor is a prime example of that, central quarter. I mean, we had what used to be the edge of town and industries located in that area. As the community's grown, those businesses and industries, we, we don't want to kick them out. We want them to continue to exist. But when they reach the life expectancy of their building or their business goes under, or they can't sell their business per se, that that business would reestablish in an area where industrial uses are going to be provided, if that's the use that we're talking about. So on Fifth Avenue, there's a lot of industries that are located in that area that they were created as non-conforming uses. Storage was one of them. But if you drive down that street and you see residential across from storage, and now we have an apartment building going up, you can understand why it doesn't make sense for those types of uses to be directly adjacent to the newer uses that are going in. So that's kind of the broad brush, what the purp, not really broad, that is the purpose of the code. And, and I, I know that sounds harsh, but that's, that's how the code is written. It's, it's very standard language within any zoning code on non-conforming structures and uses. Next slide. I'm seeing what my next slide is, so I just have to say it, I guess. So just to speak a little bit about the definition. So a non-conforming use, building or structure is an existing use that's in a zoning district that does not meet the applicable standards of that current zoning district. So the Fifth Avenue is an example. You have an auto repair shop and the zoning now is for multifamily residential. That use is considered a non-conforming use. Next slide, please. You can also have a non-conforming lot. And so lot, bulk regulations on a, on a, in an area can change. So currently, and we talked a little bit about when we were rezoning, we've got a, a, a lot, a lot of lots that are sized, I said it too, sixty by one hundred. Now that's our minimum lot size. We've got a whole bunch of those throughout the community. And I think under our previous code, that was considered the, the, the minimum lot size in the community, like citywide. Well, if you drive around just north of uptown, many of those lots are, can be, can be down to forty feet wide and only eighty feet deep, you know, in the old two-story with a rear loaded alley garage. So those lots under the zoning would be considered legal, or would be considered non-conforming lots. Now, if you go to the next slide, if they were established prior to the adoption of the current code, they become a legal, non-conforming use. And so that provides their ability to continue to exist under certain parameters. So that's why when you hear us talk a lot about, well, that auto dealership down there, well, how did they get there? It's own residential. Well, they're a legal, non-conforming use that, that existed upon the adoption of whatever the current ordinance is or the, that zoning district classification.
Commonly referred to as their grandfathered in.
Yeah, their grandfathered in. That's another way to say that, absolutely. So those are the kind of conversations that you hear from a planning perspective that so when someone comes in and says they want to open a business, sometimes we have to say no, because, well, Joe's car repair was there five years ago. Why can't I do it now? Well, it was a legal, non-conforming use. They went away for a period of time and now you cannot reestablish that. It's also, and I'm going to sidebar for just two seconds, why you've seen the planning department be very specific in the desire to have a business license. Because let's say Joe's automobile repair shop was down there on Fifth Avenue. There's no requirement for a license. No one knows that business as, as is establishing there. And all of a sudden, they come in to get a building permit after they bought the property, made improvements. And then they come in to pull a permit for something. And all of a sudden, it's like, I'm sorry, but you, you can't build your business there. It's not compliant with zoning. And all of a sudden, they've already invested a whole lot of money and the only time we really know that they've come in is when they come to get a building permit. So that's why you, and then that puts staff in a position to have to say, I'm sorry, but you can't do that or and we all know how that goes. It doesn't go well. So I digressed a little bit there, but so the legal so we talked a little about the legal non-conforming uses. What's next slide there, Tara? So if you have a legal, non-conforming use in a zoning district, there's some standards of applicability upon which they, which they, they operate under. The first one is that they may continue to exist subject, they continue to exist subject to the, to the ordinance. So Joe's automobile shop can continue to exist in perpetuity. They can continue to move on if they make any kind of an improvement, not expanding, but internally, they got to meet all the current codes and such. But they are allowed to continue to exist. And that's where, that's the grandfathered in, legal, non-conforming use. The other thing is, is that the burden of proof is on the property owner. So a, a good example would be Joe's automobile repair goes, goes away. You know, we don't know that it goes away there, but it's, it's, let's say it's only done for three months. Well, they have to prove that it's been only three months since that previous use went away before we can say Tom's automobile repair shop can go in. Now, it is a very good practice for, for a planning department to understand where their non-conforming uses are, to document them and have protocols in place for that. That goes back to kind of the business license. Until a business goes away, you don't know that it did. It could have been defunct and not an operation for, for months. So it's very difficult to track that. That's why the burden of the proof is on the, on the applicant or the business owner at the time. And we, we had that issue come up now and again. Next slide. The other is safety regulations, just, this just only makes sense, is that regardless of the use, the city has the ability to enforce and enact regulations that protect the public health and welfare convenience and, and obviously fire and health codes can be enacted. So sometimes the uses become a little rough in a neighborhood and we get a lot of complaints. They need to maintain the current codes and standards. And we can't enforce that. And then finally, from a governmental action, we can't go in and, and create non-conforming, non-conforming structures by virtue of a taking. So if we buy pieces of property, that, that we can't establish something as, as non-conforming through that process. I really don't have a good example of that one. Unless it's a lot, you know, a, a lot of record and you buy half the lot and then you create a, a legal, non-conforming lot. But we've not run into that issue. I mean, we've, you know, practiced, went down the road of some eminent domain proceedings. Next slide. So when it, when it comes to what you're really talking about, it, we're talking about non-conforming uses of land, lots, buildings and structures. And, and the ordinance that we have in the book regulates those above. And it also talks about, and it establishes how they can be expanded, if they can be relocated, the change of use, what happens when they're abandoned and the damage and destruction. And obviously, the big one right here is damage and destruction through duration. But we're also going to talk about the well, let's, let's just walk through the slides here. So those are the items that within the ordinance are, are specific. What's next slide there? So the expansion of the use shall not be expanded, extended or enlarged or increase the intensity of use. So this includes the building or the ground. So if I own five acres and I have a used car lot on one acre, I can't come in if it's illegal, non-conforming use and say, well, I'm just going to do another acre because I own that all. That's an expansion of the use. Same as a building, if I have a, a, a large warehouse and I'm selling fireworks on one end and becomes a non-conforming use in that area, I, I can't, I can't say, well, I'm just going to make the whole warehouse. So it says you cannot, you cannot do that. Next slide. Relocation, it cannot be relocated in the district. So you can't say, well, I was here, I'm just going to move across the street. So next slide. The change of use. So Tom's auto shop wants to become Bob's Metal Works. Well, they were the same industrial zoning, but it's now, you can't do that either. It's, it's got to be, that use is allowed to perpetuate as it is and continuing as it is, not within that same zoning district boundary, because you, you'll get a lot of questions about that. Well, it was a paint shop and now we want to make it an auto shop. Well, there, it's not the same use. Next slide. Abandonment, this is, this is the other one is, so if you have a business that just goes defunct and the building sits empty, then after six months or one hundred and eighty days, that's, that's the point at which that it loses that, that legal non-conformity. And you can't reestablish the business. So it's just considered, it's just considered not viable. And so the only thing that would be able to establish in that building or facility would be something that meets the zoning district regulations. Next slide. So this is a, this is the, the part that, that changes a little bit. If a use is destroyed or damaged by fire or other acts of God, to the extent of the cost of the registration, restoration to the condition in which it was before the occurrence will exceed fifty-five percent of the cost. Reconstructing the entire structure, the use will not be restored unless it's conforming to the zoning code. So storm comes in, and this is the concern with some of the folks that have storage facilities and they're non-conforming use. Storm comes through, duration comes through, takes down half the building or three quarters of the building. All of a sudden, they've, they're, that fifty-five percent threshold has been reached and they can't rebuild. I will say that up until about two weeks ago, that's the communication that I had with them. And I think I communicated that to the council as well. If it goes beyond that amount, you just can't rebuild. And I think that caused a lot of consternation with folks. They didn't really like that provision. It certainly meets the intent of the purpose of the code, as we talked about in the first slide. But it's, it's, I mean, it's pretty standard or pretty, the line is drawn there. So in, in order for someone to do that, they would have to come in and tell, show us, you know, dollars and cents and provide that documentation to suggest one way or the other. If you read through, did someone say something?
Do you see in the change for the code is going to be increased to fifty-five percent?
No, no. No, it, it, no, I'm not proposing any changes. Yeah, that's the zoning board one?
No. This is the non-conforming building structures.
Oh, it says fifty. I'm sorry. That's me transposing the number in the slides. So, so that's a, so the percentage though is where we were calculating it before. So, and that's where folks were getting upset where, you know, if the zoning changes, I can't rebuild it all if I'm destroyed. Well, if you look at the handout that I provided to you, I am, I, I believe there's some highlighted portion in there that identifies a code section of the zoning board of adjustment. Well, I didn't really move to the zoning board and take a peek at that. So if you take the second document called zoning board of adjustment and you move down to the yellow highlighted area, I believe it's on page two, you'll see that there are special exceptions provided in one of those, the one that's highlighted, provides the opportunity for the zoning board of adjustment to review the non-conforming use and prove, next slide, and provides parameters upon which it can, can be reestablished. Now, the percentages don't match up between the one code section and the other. So that's, that's where we got to make some tweaks. I'm not proposing any tweaks tonight. What I really want to do is just to kind of let the council know where we are with non-conforming uses and structures as it relates to storage garages and duration. And also just to clarify, because I've been very specific to a few folks who I've tried to go back and talk to about this, that there is a, there is a way out and ability to reestablish a non-conforming use by going to the zoning board of adjustment. And as you can see, the provision there, and I'm not going to begin to project what we would need to do to provide that the public interest is being served. I, I think I'll probably need to talk with Ryan, Ryan, a little bit about what that really means. But the zoning board of adjustment would hear a case about reestablishing the non-conforming use and they'd have to propose a compelling reason that the use should continue. And to provide that the public interest is being served by the continuation of that non-conforming use, if it's been damaged beyond whatever that percentage is in the ordinance. So I know I spoke really fast and covered a lot of ground, but I'm going to give the same presentation to our zoning board of adjustment and the, and the planning commission, because these are all items that are going to be coming forward as we continue to rezone the community. As we talk about damaged buildings and structures due to duration, as they commit for permits. And then as businesses turn over, unfortunately, throughout the progress of whatever we're dealing with currently. So any questions on that?
I see questions. Go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. Tom, can you just clarify for the benefit of everybody? The sixty-five percent of the fair market value would be, would, does changing the zoning of it give it a diminished value in determining the fair market value based on what the occupation or what the occupancy was at current status versus what it would, with the new zoning? Can you just touch base on that real quick? I know that's complex, but.
I don't, I don't know that I could answer that with any confidence, to be honest. I mean, I, I think.
It could.
Yeah, yeah. Realtor would be somebody who, yeah, because, because obviously if you're selling a building, that's a legal, non-conforming use. And if you notice, and, and I'm, I'm pointing out discrepancies in our code that need to be straightened out. This is fair market val- value and under the other section, it talks about the cost to reconstruct.
Yeah, I, I noticed that just in terms of statutory construction, the, the non-conforming use structure is not fair market value. It's total replacement cost.
Yeah.
So we're talking about two totally different valuation formulas, not just different percentages.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll be bringing back some future conversations on this, obviously. But like I said, it, it's not, since I've been here, we've not had to go down this road. And then I, that's been twenty years. So it's, it's a new, new, new language and new provisions that we're, you know, diving into.
Thank you. Will, go ahead.
That was kind of my question, because like Ryan just pointed out, in the zoning board of adjustments, it says the sixty-five percent of fair market value. But then when you're reading the non-conforming uses, it says fifty percent of reconstruction. It doesn't say fifty percent of what? Assessed market value, appraised value. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It actually, you, if you look before it, the, the cost of the restoration of the entire building prior to the incident, that's why it's fifty percent of the reconstruction being fifty percent of total replacement value. So it, it's a, it's a very clunky, unwieldy statute as I read it too. So you could probably use some fine tuning regardless, but yeah, it's, the two do not sync up at all.
And in, I didn't go into great detail in documenting what cities do, what within this like the, the general non-conformity in the zoning board, special exception is pretty standard. The percentages, whether it's fair market value or the rebuild, they kind of vary across community to community. There are communities that say it has to be reestablished within a period of time and they just allow the reestablishment. I don't think that meets the provision of the code. Some codes do not even reference the zoning board language. Like you can see in our code, the non-conforming re, just says subject to the zoning board of adjustment. Some codes don't even say that. So unless you really look, you can't even, you don't even see that special exception, which I thought was really interesting, but.
It, it probably determines on how badly you want to enforce your phase out period.
Yeah. I'm glad I found it. I'd hate to have done anything contrary and had the provision found later.
Before we go back to Will, anyone else have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so Tom, the upshot of this is once the valuation language is level set across all components of our documents, I think that's a identified necessity. What our current regulatory structure is, is that there is a path. What the our current regulatory structure is, is that there is a pathway of satisfaction available to. Mr. Green and I think the other gentleman, wasn't it Mr. Lukor?
Yes.
Um and and that is is to uh put forward a case as necessary to the zoning board of adjustment.
That that's correct. So um and I you know, I could I could see the public is the public interest being served. You know, in those instances, I we would do the the notice to the neighborhood and you know, I think you would find out if there, you know. That public interest would probably wait a lot would be looked at on how they are perceived in that area. So.
Okay, go ahead, Will.
So another question was um. Uh back to I think it was expansion was one of your topics. Um so if, okay, the example. Uh Tom's auto repair bought a property that was um. Uh zoned correctly when they bought it, but then the zoning changed. And there was room to expand and that's what their plan was to someday expand, but then the zoning changed and. Now they're not able to expand on the property they purchased that they expected to expand on. Can they go to the boarding zoning board of adjustments and will they approve an expansion, even if it's legal, nonconforming now?
Um the way I'm reading it, it's 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 only for the reestablishing of a nonconforming use, but I've. I would let the guy behind me. Provide me the the details of that, but um the way the way I'm reading that in the uh it's under the zoning board of adjustment, that special exception is. Specific to the reestablishment of the nonconforming use, not the expansion.
Yeah, go ahead, man.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to keep splitting hairs, but these are just great questions. But if let's say this was a. Self-storage unit that had zero outside storage capability. And they suffered a damage and half of the buildings were destroyed, but not to exceed the limits within the guideline. If they chose, could they just then convert that to outside storage? Um and still meet the parameters of of the continuance of a nonconforming.
Within our new code, we do have um outside storage provided, I believe, as a an accessory use. So if the district did not provide for that use, they would not be able to to do it.
Okay.
It would only be if it's consistent with the zoning.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that was very helpful discussion and. It's it's good when you do that periodically about various topics just to educate us and help us learn how how it all works. So.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I really wanted to be able to bring to light that that because I did talk to both uh Mr. Lukor and and Green. And indicated that there there wasn't really a path forward. Um it seemed a little odd to me, so I did do a little deeper dive into the into the ordinances and and didn't find that provision. So. I wanted to make sure that I reached out to them and also informed the council of that situation. So.
Just a reminder, provide the handouts to council members Jensen and Goodell, please. Thank you. Anything else? All right, uh we have one uh. One more item, which is the COVID update before we get to the closed session.
Yeah, this one will be fairly short. I think the biggest thing right now is that um. We're going to wait and see if there's any kind of local post-holiday bounce or change um in the COVID numbers. But if there's not, um and it follows the pattern that we saw after Thanksgiving, we would look to move into phase two. Uh about the third week of January, which would allow for more uh in-person meetings. Would also allow for people to come into City Hall and other buildings by appointment. Some of the things that we had to curtail when we moved back into phase one protocols in November. So we'll be making that decision uh over the next couple of weeks as we see what the case count does locally. Uh that in our call with the other local jurisdictions around the metro today, that was the consensus amongst the group that. Uh we're all moving that direction. So uh assuming that everybody behaved well through the holidays, uh we can look forward to. Being a little bit closer back to normal before the end of January.
Okay, questions for long? Go ahead.
Yeah, how how um is the community at large, by that I mean Lynn County Health and and all the municipalities. Tracking the uh evolution of this uh more transmissible variant that is now starting to circulate internationally.
Have not received a briefing on that one yet, um but I'm assuming it will be on the public health call on Friday.
Other questions? Any any word about uh availability of vaccine to our first responders?
It has been a ma- uh made available in limited doses to our first responders, so we are starting to see uh people. Uh employees are starting to get the first round of inoculations. I believe Chief Crable received hers yesterday at four o'clock.
Oh, that's great. Good. We have progress. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on closed session. Councilmember Bradkins.
Make a motion to adjourn to exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section twenty dash seventeen three of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn to exempt session regarding collective bargaining. As permitted under section twenty point one seven three of the Code of Iowa. Maybe have the council's legal statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um I have reviewed this uh material that is a subject of the proposed exempt session. Do believe that it is appropriate, the council adjourned uh to discuss it in exempt session pursuant to Iowa Code section twenty point seventeen subparagraph three.
Okay, there's no comments or discussion. We'll take the roll call vote.
I just wanted to say that Ms. Goodelia has left the meeting, so I won't be reading for her vote.
Okay, Councilmember Goodella has left the meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternen?
Yes.
Okay, the we are now adjourned to the exempt session. We'll return to open session upon completion. Thank you. Yes, sir.
One very fine distinction between an exempt session and a s- a closed session. You do not need to return to open session. You can adjourn the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, good. Well, we won't be returning the office. We're now in a in a exempt session.